I call to order the City of Woodenville Planning Commission for Wednesday, July 24, 2024. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Stadler.
Here.
Vice Chair Yavroff.
Here.
Commissioner Lang. Commissioner Mesa.
Here.
Commissioner Krebs.
Here.
Commissioner Lang did tell us he was going to join us remotely, so we'll see if he does. Please stand and join me in the flag salute. Are there any changes to the agenda and order and content from any commissioners? Seeing none, that'll take us to public comments, and we're waiting for the list to come forward to the diocese. When I call your name, come forward, state whether you live in the city of Woodenville or not, and you will have three minutes. First person to sign up is Julio Ortiz.
Yeah. Hi. My name is Julio Ortiz. Are you guys gonna start measuring the minutes now, or? Oh, all right. My name is Julio Ortiz, and I'm the owner of Twisted Cuban Cafe. I've brought a bunch of points here to talk about, but once I went through the door, I was supposed to sign, and he was asking me three questions. Number one, are you a resident of Woodenville? I've been a resident of Woodenville for probably about 18 years. Do you own a business in Woodenville? I have owned not just the Twisted Cuban Cafe, but all the three other businesses right here in Woodenville. Do you own a property in Woodenville? I've owned three properties in Woodenville, one that's about $2 million worth of price. And it's not that the price matters, but I think Woodenville has been part of my life for a very long time, and my kids grew up here. That's the reason why I'm here today, to talk about the rezoning of the old Woodenville, where all of our businesses there, obviously, they're part of the minority type of, and I'm talking about all of us. I'm talking about me, that I'm, we have owned this business for over 16, 17 years. We get customers from all over Washington. We get over from Wenatchee, we get them from Bellevue, from Tacoma, we get them from all over the, all over the place to come in here and bring business to the town. I think it's, you know, I thought about just coming in here and just letting you know how we feel about it, which is, is gonna be just, for us, it's gonna be a total disaster. So I'm here just to, in the voice of all of our businesses in that area, to just kind of defend our point of trying to keep our businesses the same way, because the high taxation after becoming just residency all over the place there, obviously, you know, it's not like we need anymore in Woodenville, but like changing all of that old town that Woodenville started right there is just gonna be a complete disaster for several families, several businesses, and several, and we're not talking about big businesses, we're talking about small businesses that have been suffering throughout COVID, and we're just trying to survive after all of this. I'm still trying to pay all my debt from COVID, which I haven't finished paying, and all of a sudden, all of this situation going on with this rezoning is gonna obligate my landlord to get out of, out of where I am, and it's the only place where I could pay the rent that I, that I'm paying right now. So if, if this rezoning goes through, we're many families, they're all gonna go out of businesses, and we're just gonna, and obviously, I give myself value, and I give my family value too, because I've paid my taxes, I've brought value to this community too, and we love the city of Woodenville, but it's just gonna be a complete disaster. That's, that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
The next person that has signed up is Alex Campbell, and just before Mr. Campbell comes to the podium, let the record show that Commissioner Lang has joined us remotely.
Good evening. I'm glad to see the, Alex Campbell, I live in the city limits. I'm glad to see the, the Planning Commission back to its full strength, although that's just a temporary fullness, you'll get two more soon, and in fact, we were, we were graced with them in the last meeting, too. I come also to speak about the Old Town Rezone, and I just wanna ask a question, because there are two of you who were not here at all, so you need, so I think this is an important discussion topic that should be brought back up. Why? Why are we even doing this? It's not for, it's, well, I'll speak to why it's not for a moment, but let's talk about historically, what is CBD? Our CBD zoning was created with first-floor residential, and Old Town is covered by that same rule, so that even if it became apartments and so forth above, there was an activity throughout the day. People would come and go to the risk, to the businesses during the day while everyone else is presumably off at work. At the end of the night, people would come home, they'd have a place to go get a bite to eat, a little drink, maybe cut their hair, all the services they needed within, not just a shore walk, but just downstairs, and it brings a real sense of community. So that's the purpose of a mixed-use zone, which CBD already is, Old Town already is. So now, why is this being asked, that we remove the requirement for that one floor of retail at the bottom? Frankly, it's about money. The landowner wants to make more money, the developer wants to make more money, so they're asking for this, and they're bringing, and they're gonna tell you it's about housing, but you're all very much involved with GB rezoning. You know we will have thousands more units than we need to meet our growth targets. It's not about affordable housing, because again, GB rezone will cover that, we're told. It's not about housing type, because the, though the application includes lots of pretty pictures, we all know, from, at least you all should know as planning commissioners, never believe the pictures. They're showing townhomes, but nothing in that ordinance, read it carefully, says it must be townhomes. In fact, the picture shows what looks to me like an impossible design without tearing down Villa Element, which was just built. So I come back to, this is a bad idea, it has no reason to be done, and I really think there's no reason to change it from the current CBD zone, which includes first-floor retail and upper-story housing. It will, in fact, remove a sense of community from that area of the city. That area will simply become a series of dormitories, which people only drive to or to or from, lay their head down and sleep. It will not be part of downtown anymore, and we have enough places in the city where people only sleep at night. We want a live, lively, vibrant downtown community, especially there at the terminus of East Rail, where it just has crossed the stream, if you believe in that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. That's everybody that has signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward and make public comment? All right, seeing none, that will take us to Council Liaison Report. Welcome, Mayor Millman, nice to see you tonight.
Thank you for having me. A few items that I wanna bring your attention. First off, we got eight applicants for two openings on planning, so our August, I think it's sixth meeting, will be longer than was anticipated, but that's okay. I think it's great that we have lots of participation, so we anticipate filling your two vacant seats fairly soon. Last meeting, we talked about transportation impact fees. They haven't been changed since 2012, and so we had lots of discussion on what they could and should be. Some of it centered around the rate to mix in with not killing affordable housing, but high enough to get traffic impact fees without killing business, so we didn't settle on a rate, but we asked staff to come back with more information. Pavement condition evaluation was really good, and I told everybody that, and I, you guys probably see this true, like, you know when you're leaving the city of Woodenville, because the road conditions are dramatically inferior to what we have in Woodenville. So our pavement evaluation was really cool, and if you haven't seen it, it's a vehicle that has a spinning thing, it's almost like one of those Waymo things, and it runs around and evaluates our pavement, it's pretty cool. Almost all of our pavement has really improved over the last 20, I think it was 18 to 2024, so we've, our scoring has went up dramatically, but we do still have some areas, and we're, it looks like we're intending to maintain 2.5 million, which we've been putting in every year, so that'll be good to keep the, improve the conditions and keep them where they're at. We had a school, a discussion of school zone safety cameras. We had a, this was brought to us by Chief Myers. We had a Kenmore Traffic Engineer, and he gave a very lengthy and detailed and long presentation. It was really good, you can see he's very enthusiastic about traffic, and so we had that, that was for discussion only, and then we went into the main event, which is our CIP discussion, that was our first look at our CIP plans, and we had a discussion about that, and, and all the council got to weigh in on what they thought should be in our CIP. We're gonna have many more discussions that typically settles out, October, November, December, depending on how long council is gonna drag that fight out. September, I've been talking to Brandon, the city manager, about having a joint planning public spaces meeting, we did that a year and a half ago, two years ago. We're gonna do it again. September, we don't have an official date yet. City manager has been talking, and I know the city manager pretty well, and he doesn't really gush that often, but he has a speaker that he's trying to bring in that's been at some of the city manager events that he goes to around the country, that is, is, I guess is a really good speaker, and is gonna help everybody kinda get enthusiastic about all of the stuff that's in front of us and how we imagine our city, so I think that'd be appropriate time if we can, we can get him on the schedule. Let's see, that, that's about all I have.
Any questions for the mayor? All right, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go into the concert.
I'm heading back.
All right, that will take us to our business and discussion item. The first item is the draft Planning Commission minutes of 6/26/2024 and 7/10/2024. Are there any changes or corrections addition? With that, can we have a motion?
I move the draft Planning Commission minutes of June 26, 2024, and July 10, 2024 be approved as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yavroff and a second by Commissioner Mesa to approve the draft Planning Commission minutes of June 26, 2024, and July 10, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Obseined? All right, that passes. That will take us to the public hearing we have scheduled on the critical areas update, and let me get to that. And can we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move we open the public hearing on the critical areas update.
Second? Should we second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yavroff and a second by Commissioner Mesa to update, or open the public hearing on the update to the critical area regulations. With that, we will go to a staff report. Director Grunbaum.
All right. Let's go ahead and dive into this. So we, we had, this is a requirement of the Growth Management Act that we have what are called critical areas, that we have to go through a process of designating and adopting these, using what's called best available science, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a slide here shortly. What's important to remember is critical areas contain important natural functions and embodies a variety of natural and community values. So we have the list I've got up there of wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geological hazard areas, and fish and wildlife conservation areas are all critical areas that we have to adopt regulations for, and in the case of like wetland and the fish and wildlife, it's about preservation. In the case of stuff like geological hazards, it's about safety. In the case of frequently flooded areas, it's about safety, and in the case of critical aquifer recharge, it's more about preventing toxins and stuff from getting into our groundwater supplies. So a little bit of background, I'm not gonna go through the entire presentation like we did back in June 26, because we did talk about this a bit, but I just wanna highlight a couple of things as a reminder for the public hearing, which includes that our current critical areas regulations are in Chapter 2151, and this chapter applies to critical areas that are outside of the shoreline jurisdiction. We do have another set of critical areas regulations in Chapter 2177, those apply inside the shoreline jurisdiction. So it used to be that you had critical areas, used to apply to everything, and then they started splitting out between the shoreline jurisdiction, which has a different state agency involved with it, versus the rest of the, outside of the critical area stuff, and that's the growth management ones, and so what we're talking about tonight are the ones that'll apply outside of the shoreline areas, they're the GMA ones. So a couple of things you may recall and noted, because we have to update for a couple of things. One, we have to check for best available science, which, as I mentioned again, I'll talk about in another slide here for a moment, in a moment, and then also, we have to make sure that we have updated to reflect any changes in state law, and there has been one major change, this new no net loss of ecosystem functions and values. It's very similar to what we have with our shoreline critical areas regulations that we adopted a few years ago, but now they've also brought this over into the GMA, and basically what that is saying is that they, that our current ecological functions of our critical areas, that in allowing more development to occur and stuff, we don't wanna see a further degradation of those critical areas happening. So that's one thing we have to review our codes for, and then the other thing we have to take a look at is any changes in best available science, and this is one thing, when we talked at the last meeting, we did a review of that and had not seen anything necessarily significant. We believed at the time that a lot of the stuff that we were doing, where we were carrying over the stuff from our shoreline into our GMA stuff, that that was following best available science. Subsequently, we have been receiving some public comments from some of the state agencies, and it's gonna require us to do a deeper dive into a couple of provisions, which I'll talk about here in a moment, but what we ultimately were trying to do, though, is we are trying to create as much consistency as we can between the two sets of critical areas regulations, the ones in 2177 and the ones in 2151, but because of some of these new changes and stuff, there will still end up being some differences, but to the extent we can create consistency, that is one of our major goals with this update as well. So I just wanna talk real quickly, a little bit more about the best available science. This is actually outlined both in the Growth Management Act, and then Commerce has adopted rules to help provide guidance for local jurisdictions on how to make sure that they are incorporating best available science into their critical areas regulations, and I cite the WAC on this, where this comes out of. So the main thing to just be aware of is that best available science refers to scientific information that is produced through what they can call a valid scientific process, and I list up here, these are the things that they list in the, in the law that apply to a valid science process, and one of the more important pieces of this is that it can be peer-reviewed, its methods can be replicated, and then include logical conclusions and reasonable inferences, informations placed in proper context, and references relevant, credible literature, and other pertinent existing information. The peer review and the methods can be replicated, it is really important, because I have seen, I had seen jurisdictions try to, and people try to bring up saying, they'll bring up a study that's like one study out of 100 that will do something totally office and try to claim that that's best available science, that'll get rejected, because if it's like one out of 100, if you've got 99 studies saying this, and one study saying something else, it's not gonna be considered valid, and so therefore it ends up being rejected. But it is interesting to see some of the things that, that people will come up with and will try to cite, because you can pretty much find science to say anything you want it to say, ultimately, but in the context of what we have to do with our critical areas regulations, we have to generally follow what's been peer-reviewed and stuff that can be replicated, follows all of this, these outlines. So we can use local, state, and federal resource agencies, because a lot of them, like Fish and Wildlife, Ecology, and others, DNR, a lot of them will, you know, spend years doing the research and studies and stuff, and will put together proposals best on best available science, so the law allows us to use those resources. We can also, though, create, also generate our own best available science, as long as it does meet all of these other requirements that I mentioned as well, and this is kinda gonna be pretty important as I get into talking about some of the major changes, particularly when we get to the stream slide here. So the first couple of these, you saw this from before, I talked about some of the major changes. One of the big things, we currently have these things listed of exemptions from critical areas regulations, switching it over to permitted uses, and a lot of it's just more details are involved, and we ended up deleting the non-conforming provisions in there because of this no net loss, because the non-conforming development's not consistent with that no net loss standard. The wetland regulations, these follow state criteria, which are, some of it's based on, a lot of it's based on federal, so we don't necessarily have to do best available science on that, because we're just basically complying with the state requirements, as is pretty much everybody else has seen as well. Geological hazard regulations, these are revised to reflect importance on reducing risk. Our current ones try to do a little bit more on the preservation side, but that's not really what geological hazard regulations are about. Geological hazard regulations are about reducing risk and using expertise, engineering, to help reduce those risks, so that they are either eliminated or they're brought down to an acceptable level. So we made modifications to reflect that, which gives us a bit more flexibility with our geological hazard areas in terms of as we look at the development and stuff on it. Now, this is the big one, and this is one of the reasons why you'll see I have in the staff report, and I also will mention again in another slide here, where we're recommending that the public hearing, you take testimony today, but you don't close the public hearing, that we'll continue it on, because subsequent to doing all the public noticing and stuff that we do, when we start sending this off to state agencies, we've gotten some input back from some of the state agencies that has recommended that we take a closer look at our stream regulations. The Fish and Wildlife did some major updates back in 2021, which was just shortly after we adopted our shoreline regulations, and so we need to actually do a deeper dive into that and take a look at those regulation, or those recommendations, and take a look at our regulations, because there is some inconsistencies between what Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife has developed and what our current proposal has. So one of the things in particular, like, for example, is that they're replacing the stream and buffer designations with what they're calling repairing and management zones, and they classify them like type one, type two, type three, type four, and they've got some different definitions that come up with these things, and they are a little bit different than, you know, the current approach on stuff, so we'll need to take a look at that. And then the other thing, though, and this is one thing that has always lacked in these studies, which is, and this includes the stuff that Fish and Wildlife is doing with the current stuff, is that they usually don't do a very good job at taking into account for urban environments. Most of these studies that they usually incorporate tend to be more in the outside areas, and they tend to be where you've already got, you know, buffers or repairing areas that are already functioning at a higher level. A lot of times in your urban environments, that's not the case, and so one of the things we're trying to take a look into, one of the big concerns I have, is that if we were just to adopt the Fish and Wildlife straight up, and we may have to, we may not have a choice, but I'm wanting to do a bit more analysis on this first, before recommending this to you, is looking at the idea about the fact that if you do have it degraded, and if we can get improvements, are we still, you know, with those improvements, even if it's not necessarily meeting what you would have outside of, you know, in a more fully functional buffer, if, even if it's a smaller buffer, but it is operating at a much higher level and still achieving the same things, is that something we could potentially still incorporate into our regulations? So the example I would use on this is, for example, one of the recommendations that I saw in the new standards is a minimum of 100-foot buffer along the stream, stream courses, which may actually end up being wider than what we currently do, but they recommend a minimum of 100, but let's say 75% of that's got impervious surface, because you're in an urban environment. That is a non-functioning buffer, that's not really probably providing any support towards ecological functions of that stream, and so is it possible that, okay, if the standard's 100, but if you were to remove, let's say, and get maybe a 50 feet of that as completely being restored, is that buffer actually then still doing the same or better than the current degraded buffer? Don't we wanna try to be able to accomplish that? So, because one of my worries is if we don't allow for those things, you set these standards, if people, if you can't do anything in reducing or working around in those things, then nobody's ever gonna improve those buffers, they're just gonna stay the same, and we're not really accomplishing whatever our goals, which is trying to maintain or improve our, our, our stream in terms of their functions and stuff like that. So this is kinda the stuff that I'm, I haven't had enough time to dive into, I'm working with our consultants on this, and so I'm hoping when we bring this back to you, and we'll talk about the next meeting, that we'll continue the hearing, that I'll be able to have an updated with a bit more information around this, and make you a more fully vetted recommendation as far as when it comes to the streams. Most of the other stuff will stay the same, the geological hazard thing, we had some minor tweaking, the wetland stuff, like I said, already follows state, the critical aquifer recharge, and the frequently flooded areas, those things are all in pretty good shape as they are today. It's mostly just dealing with these streams that we've gotta take a closer look at, so. So yeah, I just wanted to mention that, as, and one of the reasons why I'm recommending keeping the hearing open and not closing it after today, so the public will have an opportunity when we bring revisions back, they'll still have an opportunity to be able to comment on that, too, if you want it. All right, so this next slide, I just wanted to show you that we're also working on the critical areas map, I mentioned this before in our previous meeting when we talked about this. This is kinda what this, what it may start looking like, it's a little different than the current one, but we're reviewing, Nikki, our GIS analyst, has been digging into the data, so we may have a little bit more tweaking on this, but we're updating this to reflect all of the most recent information that we can find and reflect some of the changes in some of the state statutes and stuff, so I wanted to show you where we're at with this right now, there's still a little bit more work to go with on this, but we, we are making progress on this, and this, I'll also, also remind is that this is not a regulatory document, the critical areas map, unlike our zoning code, which is a regulatory document, this is just a guidance document, so we don't formally adopt this, this is just brought along, staff puts this together, and it's to help applicants when they're doing projects, they can look things up on this map, and they can then try to identify if there's potentially critical areas on it. Ultimately, the only deciding factor on the critical area is a site-specific analysis. This map doesn't make the determination, it's actually experts doing an analysis on the site, but this helps give, give everybody a heads up if there is the potential of critical errors before they even come in with their application. All right, so that's all I have. Again, as I rec, I mentioned, I would recommend, you know, take any testimony that is to be offered tonight, but then I would recommend, like I said, not closing it, and then that we would continue this public hearing to the next Planning Commission meeting, which likely will be September, but I'll talk more about that later at the end of the night when we're at the director's report, so.
Any questions on this? All right. With that, we're ready to take public testimony. All right. So the first person is Sharon Peterson, come to the podium, state your name, whether you live in the city of Woodenville or not, and since this is a public hearing, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Peterson, I live in the city of Woodenville, it only took me 12 minutes to find a parking spot because of the concerts going on down there, otherwise I would've probably been here closer to on time. First of all, I wanna compliment the staff on the great job you did with rewriting and editing the critical areas sections, and I love the inclusion of best possible science, and I just really can't say enough how important that is for Woodenville, and my experience with this goes back to when we were all looking at the wood trails in Montebello and wanted to put 100, well, we didn't, but developers wanted to put 100 little tiny houses on a steep hill with erosion and landslide and earthquake hazards that would've interrupted wildlife corridors and salmon and everything else under God's green earth. That is not the vision of Woodenville, and that's not the vision that I think this Planning Commission should have and should support or put forth to the city council. So if anything, I would recommend that as you read all of the documentation, that you look for where are other areas where best available look for where are other areas where best available science can be implemented and where we can look at, like for example, the tree credit language. When I watched the Arabian Farm get torn down and mowed down and every single tree on it except for maybe one or two just get mowed over, and then they pretend that, oh, I can plant 65 little tiny trees and that will be our tree credits, and that will substitute for the old growth timber that used to be on this site. It's impossible, it's ecologically impossible for 65 little trees to take the place of an aged gorgeous old growth timber. And our tree policy sort of says that that's okay, and I don't think it is okay. I think we need to be careful to protect what we have here, we need to be careful to protect the tree canopy that allows our balloons, which is part of our logo, to continue to fly overhead. We need to be careful to protect the known and documented animal corridors that exist in what is now Wood Trails Park, that go all the way up to the Brightwater, and then they go down to the Salmon Stream, and then they go down from there to the other stream, and they go to Lake Washington and Lake Union and out to the ocean. I mean, those are all documented, they're protected, there are WIREA8 studies that the state of Washington has done, that, that we, the city of Woodenville, should pay attention to. The last, I think, question is about the last 15 pages of the document that I think was the proposed changes, there didn't seem to appear to be any edits whatsoever. And maybe I didn't understand the document when I was reading it, or maybe the track changes got turned off, but I saw a lot of edits and strike through in the first six or seven pages, but then there's a whole section where there's nothing. And so maybe if somebody could clarify me for me, why is that in the packet, and was there a purpose that I just didn't catch? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. That's the only person that's signed up, any else, anybody else care to make a public comment in the public hearing? All right, with that, can we, a motion to continue the public hearing?
I move to continue the public hearing to the next regular planning commission meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yarborough, and a second by Commissioner Krebs, to continue the public hearing to the next regular planning commission meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? And abstain? All right, the public hearing is continued. All right. Next business item, continued discussion on the code amendment to allow ground floor residential facing public streets in the Old Town neighborhood, CBD. Staff report.
Good evening again, let me go ahead and get my PowerPoint. All right. So this is, as noted, it's a discussion about the ground floor residential in the central business district zone. So just kind of a reminder of some of the background, this started out with Main Street Properties or Development LLC, I guess, requested a change to the zoning code to allow for ground floor residential dwelling units facing the public streets in the CBD zone. We currently have these provisions in our code, but currently it's not allowed in the central, in the Old Town neighborhood area, and so they were making a request to be able to have this extended to include the Old Town. Basically, it has to do with that they're interested in building town homes on a, the West Point property, which some of you were involved with years ago, with the development agreement that's on that property. As that project's collapsed, Main Street's been taking a look at it, but they're not interested in that project, they're interested in more doing just town homes on it. So city council discussed the Main Street request at their May 21st meeting and voted to place the Main Street's request on the planning commission's 2024 work plan. So we began kind of discussing this, I believe, at our special meeting there on July 10th. Just kind of want to go over real, again, real quick, some of the background that kind of goes into this. So I'll start out first of all, talking about residential in the CBD zone again. And so currently, the code prohibits residential dwelling units on the ground floor in our central business district when they're facing onto public streets. Now, they can face onto private streets, but they're prohibited from facing onto public streets in the central business district zone unless you space at least 30 feet of either commercial or office space between the dwelling unit and the public street. So that's the current quiet. There are, there is an exception to this, some of you again may remember this from a number of years ago, when we worked on updating this map that has active uses. This also, and it mostly involves a pedestrian core design district, but this map here will allow for residential to then to also be actually on the public street facing onto it without that space of at least 30 feet of the commercial office space. If it's approved through a development agreement, that council would approve it. The main thing, as I mentioned though, that this is primarily in the pedestrian core design district, it does creep out a little bit beyond that in a couple of places, but for the most part, it's mostly in the pedestrian core design district. A little bit of the history, so when diving back into this, looking at the history of the CBD zone and residential, so originally, when the central business district zone was established, we did actually allow ground floor residential, there was none of this prohibition about it being along public streets. But then in 2010, it was part of when we were doing the Little Bear Creek downtown subarea planning, that ordinance 489 was adopted, and this prohibition entirely originally was adopted that the residential couldn't be on the ground floor at all. This was then modified a little shortly after, a couple of years later on, where then the map I just showed you before with the downtown in the pedestrian core, where they adopted to allow that, and then it got amended again back in 2020 to expand a little bit, but it also then added this, the development agreement requirement as well. So before, if you were just in there, you could do it, and then a development agreement became required in 2020, so you needed to go through the city council to get specific permission to be able to do it. So this is just a reminder of the Old Town neighborhood area, it consists of 29 parcels, 6.5 acres total land area of the lots. Lots are mostly small with about 100 feet in depth, and I do show you on that bottom piece there, so this was originally platted back in 1890, and so the, the picture you see on the bottom up there, that is from the original recorded plot, that's originally what they think they recorded back in like New York City when they were first plating this area. So we talked at the July 10th meeting, and so I've incorporated the feedback that I got in your packet, there's a little bit more detail on this, so this would be what we would look at potentially, the amendment being. We talked about that this, allowing this to flexibility would apply to the entire Old Town area, which I've highlighted in this picture of this map up in here. And then over there on the left, you can see some language, some of this I had to, I did some editing because there just needed to be some general cleanup, but we had talked about what would it take, and so planning commission had recommended that we maintain that development agreement, and then also having some mandatory public benefits. We're recommending that there be at least 10%, that those public benefits have to include affordable housing, the levels of that can be negotiated as part of the development agreement, and then also the flexibility to have potentially other public benefits to be negotiated with the development agreement as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that kind of really concludes my presentation on this.
Questions? Comments? Vice Chair Yarborough?
I read through this, and I was remembering, we made an exception for a developer in the pet area, because the, the units that they were talking about really weren't suitable for a business at all. And so it was a very special, limited exemption that we pass. This is a general kind of exemption, and the thing that I'm troubled by is, this is part of our central business district, it's set up for, for businesses, it's not set up to be a residential community totally. Businesses provide dollars and revenue for our city, and I've been told by Jim Caddick, who was the prior finance director, that basically what you're looking at is that businesses provide positive revenue for the city on net, but residences at best are neutral or actually don't contribute a full amount to the cost of what it takes to support them. So I think this is an area I'd like to not see, lest lose those businesses. In addition, this is going to be precedent-setting, because if we okay this here, it basically opens up ground floor residential throughout the whole central business district, and will be precedential for anyone else coming in saying, we want that too. I don't think that's the thing we ought to be doing. We lose our businesses' sites little by little, and once they're gone, they're gone forever, they're not coming back. We need those to keep the city thriving. And one of the things I've heard in the past is, our job really is to make decisions to benefit the citizens of Woodenville, both those who live here and those who have businesses here, to the best extent possible, while, so that we can also meet the needs of the city and the state mandates and so forth. So one of the things that happens is when we make recommendations, we see that some will say, gee, I was a loser on this one, and others will say, I was a winner on that one. That's our job, to protect the city and take care of the needs of the city. I don't think this is a positive for the city, so I'm not in support of that. In addition, saying, putting in a, a 10% affordable component, I think is incorrect, it ought to be a minimum of 20%, because if we're going to go ahead with something like this and give them that kind of benefit, the city needs to get a meaningful benefit back. But on net, I can, simply cannot support this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Mesa?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Yarborough's statements. In addition, I wanted to add that this particular part of Woodenville has a lot of small minority-owned businesses that would be greatly affected if we pass this, these changes. As stated, businesses add revenue to our city, but more importantly, having those diverse small businesses adds resiliency to the city. Anytime we develop to promote, you know, big box stores or big businesses to come in, anytime that they decide to leave, they're a big portion of our economy, and that has a great impact. Whereas having a lot more smaller diverse businesses, if one of them fails, it's not as big of a deal. Usually another one comes in, replaces it. But having big businesses come in, demand whatever they want, and then leave whenever they want, greatly affects our economy and our community. So for those reasons, I also cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Krebs?
Yeah, when we look at these, everything's always in a snapshot of the, the moment in time that we're in. So right now, Twisted's there, it's a unique cultural experience for Woodenville, it's really the only place like that nearby, Seattle has places like that. But in the future, maybe Twisted goes away, something similar comes into its place. But if we just build residential, then that, I guess, benefit of the city is gone forever, it's just housing. So it would be, I guess, option D would be, don't allow it at all, would be my suggestion.
Commissioner Lang? You may be muted, Commissioner Lang, I've called him.
All right, he must be having audio problems. So I have a question, so are you suggesting that we don't allow any residential? Because as the code currently exists, you can build, but you have to have commercial on the ground floor. So you currently, somebody could come in and develop that with commercial, and you would lose those businesses anyway. So I guess my question is, do we want to remove the housing as a, as a use in that area?
Before you go on, I should note, the ordinance is not involving that, your, your, the work program is whether you want to support allowing this on the ground floor, it doesn't include changing the CBD to prohibit residential.
Right, and my question is, is that something that they would like to look at? Because, you know, they're talking about preserving those businesses, but as it is now, somebody can come in and develop that property, add residential with commercial on the ground floor, so those businesses could go away, so.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and just, I guess to follow up, the, don't change the code option would allow, if there's a development within code, we'd have to have business on the ground floor, a company, you know, something like Twist or like the other businesses that are there, would have an opportunity to remain on the property. Residence on top, that's within code, I don't engage you with that. But getting rid of business on the ground floor, at least in the Old Town zone, I would not be in support of.
Okay, I think you have direction there, that the majority of the planning commission does not want to make any changes.
Yeah, so what would be best to do on this then is that I just need you to take a formal vote on that, that your recommendation is not to change anything, and then we'll work with the council with the rest of it. Okay, would somebody care to make a motion?
So I move that we, I guess, reject the request to allow for ground floor residential in the Old Town zone as proposed in this business item.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Krebs, and a second by Commissioner Mesa, to have, restate your motion for me, because I didn't.
I guess it would be to deny the allowance for ground floor residential in the Old Town zone as proposed.
Just to clarify, I, the motion, I'm guessing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, I think what you want to just basically make the recommendation is not to make any changes to the code.
There you go.
All right. Need to not make changes to your code.
I have a motion by Commissioner Krebs, and a second by Commissioner Mesa, to not make any changes to the zoning in, in this area. Is there any further discussion? Maker of the motion, Mr. Krebs?
No further discussion, thank you.
Anybody else?
I guess I strongly support this motion. As I stated earlier, I hate to see businesses disappear, and I think this is a special area in and of itself, and the businesses we have there, I want to see them thrive. I recognize, develop comes along and so forth, but I see no point in, in eliminating businesses because I know that development will come in, they'll put in apartments, and now those businesses were gone and gone forever. So I would strongly support the motion.
Commissioner Mesa, did you want to speak to the motion? Any further? Commissioner Lang, did you have anything? Did he go away?
Okay. I, I'm going to vote against it, because I think if we did this with a development agreement, we could, we could do it. We currently have a development agreement over there that requires ground floor on, commercial on the ground floor, and how long has that development agreement been in place?
We adopted the provision to allow the residential on the public streets through a development agreement, the development agreement's been in place, I think, a couple of years now, two or three years.
Okay.
Actually, maybe four years, it's been a while.
So I want to look at options that we can add to our housing and different varieties. They were coming forward with, with town homes, I know, it was stated, well, don't look at the pictures, but they would have to come back with a development agreement. If, if that's the way we went, and that's the way I would have liked to seen us gone, because we can always, you know, there's certain situations, you know, if we leave it, that you have to have it, but with the development agreement, you can't, as we did in the Pet Core, and I think we did that one other time in the Pet Core where we changed it to allow residential on the ground floor, didn't we? So it, it's something that has been done before, I don't think it's going to open it up to the entire CBD, as it was mentioned, because I don't think anybody's ever going to allow that on 175th, 140th, any of those areas. This is a, a unique area, I understand, but there's nothing in place that will preserve it from being what it is. So I think we could have made this work in a, in a good way, and so for that reason, I will be voting no. With that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? Abstain? All right. And just to verify, because I wasn't sure we could hear, so is it a 4-1 vote on this, or do we know what the count of the vote is?
Commissioner Lang, I think I heard you vote aye? Maybe not. Are you there, Commissioner Lang? Okay, we're not hearing, so that is, is a 4-1, or 3-1 vote at this time, because I can't record Commissioner Lang's.
Thank you.
I guess we'll put Commissioner Lang as an abstention?
Let's have it noted in the minutes that we weren't, his communication stuff wasn't working, so we weren't able to get a vote.
Okay, perfect. Next item, discussion of comprehensive plan. Next item, discussion of comprehensive plan periodic review, the transportation element.
Uh, good evening, everyone and commissioners. So I've got a couple of comp plan-related items coming up here. This first one, I think, is gonna be pretty brief. But we did want to just let you all have a chance to review and touch on the transportation and circulation element. And so we provided that draft of the element in your packet. I'm not gonna walk through all of it. Mostly because just in June of 2024, the council adopted the new 20-year transportation plan. And the planning commission held a hearing on it in March. You also saw it at a few meetings before that. And the goals and policies in the comp plan element are consistent with the plan. In fact, the comp plan element has to be consistent with the plan. That's part of the requirements. But the goals and policies that you reviewed in that capacity are unchanged in this capacity. The only real change is the comp plan element is condensed, so there's a lot less information in it. But we are putting the 2024 transportation plan as an appendix to the comprehensive plan because it has a lot of analysis that supports the comp plan element, and that analysis is required as part of our, our GMA requirements. Um, so basically, just a comparison of the two. If you had a chance to look at the element and the transportation plan, I, I probably could have gone into more in-depth here, but I, I looked at both of them. A lot of the images and the sections, and like I said, the goals and policies are identical. There is a section on funding in the comprehensive plan element that isn't in the transportation plan as detailed, and that is a requirement, again, of Growth Management Act. And then there is a smaller list of projects. And that's because the transportation plan can include everything we want to do in the next 20 years. But the comprehensive plan element does have to take into account likely funding. And if you looked at the funding sources, they are kind of a little bit vague, just because who knows what we're actually gonna get, especially when it comes to things like grants in the next 20 years. But that, reasonable estimates are in there. And so that is pretty much everything I had prepared to talk about on the transportation element. If there's any questions or comments, we're happy to hear them.
Vice Chair Yabra?
Thank you. Um, there was one piece I looked at under the goal T1, which is on page 100 of our packet, which is the first page of goals and policies. And the goal I'm concerned about is T1 dot 7. And let me read it, and then I'll add my suggested edit. Take to, take an active approach on managing, or to managing on and off-street parking in the downtown and key growth areas to minimize land dedicated to parking and ensure right-of-way balances other community needs. I would like to add into that, take an active approach to managing on and off-street parking in the downtown and key growth areas while meeting the needs of citizens and visitors to maintain the land dedicated to parking, ensure right-of-way, and so forth. I think, I think it's essential we have some balance in there because we are a tourist-oriented economy. And if the focus is solely on minimizing parking, if you take it to its ultimate conclusion, we will have extremely limited or none, and our economy will then suffer significantly. So I'd like to see some balance there.
So one thing, just to note on that, because these have already been adopted in your transportation plan. So if we do make changes on these, and it's fine, go ahead and present, and we can talk about those tonight. And if you do want to have us take a look at those, we'll have to do some following up because the transportation, these are from the transportation plan that's been before you and has been adopted. So, um, that's all been completed. So, but like I said, make the proposals tonight, let's talk about it, and then we'll take a look into what that might actually mean. And then we'll come back and talk to you about that.
I'd like to see that edit. Would it be helpful if I went before council as well?
Um, at the moment, right now, just have the conversation. And if the majority want to go along with the changes and stuff, then like I said, we'll take a look and see if that has any consequences with the existing transportation plan.
Anybody not want to make that change? Nope? Anything else?
No, that's it.
Anybody else? Okay. Oh, that was a lot quicker than I thought. With all those pages, I thought we were gonna go on for a while on that. Uh, next is discussion of comprehensive plan periodic review, goals and policies for capital facilities and utilities element.
Um, good evening again. Why, I just pulled this up for you. I think that this one might take us a little bit longer. It's, uh... Sorry, I thought I had this up already.
Well, you're getting that set. Commissioner Lang, can you hear me? Can we hear you? Yeah. We're not hearing you, Commissioner Lang. Is there, that's not on our end? Okay.
Point of order, maybe somebody could chat him in Teams and see if he can respond by chat.
Yeah, we actually can't use that. That actually gets into the open records issues and stuff. So we're not actually able to do that, at least not through the planning commission members. But we, you can try to see if we can contact him to staff.
Okay. So the next piece of the comprehensive plan that we're gonna look at tonight is the capital facilities and utilities goals and policies. I had hoped to have the whole draft chapter together in time for this meeting, but I wasn't able to make that deadline. But I think just talking about the goals and policies is really important. So that's kind of the meat of the policy decisions. So, capital facilities and utilities element. So currently, it is two elements in our currently adopted comprehensive plan. And it is, like, both elements are required by the Growth Management Act. In talking about this update, I know, or Robert and I discussed how some jurisdictions have them combined into one element, which I think in our case in particular makes a lot of sense because a lot of, um, the utilities are provided and the capital facilities, a lot of them are required or provided through contracts because we are a smaller city or special districts. So just by way of thinking about what these are, they are things like city facilities, which could be like City Hall, for example. Regional facilities that serve the city, like State Route 522 and 202. Organizations such as Sound Transit, King County provides services, North Shore School District, the Woodenville Fire and Rescue District, which right now is contracting to Eastside Fire and Rescue, the King County Library System, the Water District, Puget Sound Energy, Waste Management, and then the various telecommunication companies. And this is definitely not a comprehensive list of all the different organizations that we work with to provide services to the residents and the businesses here. It's actually kind of interesting to start thinking about how many different pieces and people and groups go into providing services within the city. So just working through the goals and policies, it's kind of up to you guys. If, I don't want to read every single one, so I'm just gonna kind of read the big-picture policies, and then please just stop me if you've got comments. So, the first, oh, and the other thing is, for now, I don't know if ultimately we're gonna want to keep it this way, but I kept the numbering as CFP for capital facilities, and then C, or then U for utilities, which is what is in our current plan. I think in the long run, we may want to reevaluate that. And then we also need to look a little bit more at our critical, or climate action and resiliency element to see where there might need to be changes and where there's overlap. So, we've got a little bit more work to do on these, but I wanted to get them in front of you so we can incorporate any comments. So, the first one is to enhance the quality of life in Woodenville through planned provision of public and private capital facilities, either directly by the city or via coordination with other public and private entities, which is kind of what I was talking about. Yes. Oh, sorry.
Uh, yeah, I was wondering if any of these goals include increasing the options of the entities that provide these facilities and utilities. It was one of the things that I know is aggravating for a lot of residents. This one, you, for example, you only have one option for internet, and it's basically a monopoly on our local region. And they can provide really bad service, and there's nothing you can do about it. So is that part of the goals, or is that something that would make sense including here?
The, you're asking about a goal to try to promote more utilities competition, or what is it?
Yes, more, uh, in general, to have more options than to just have a single one. Because I see here, the statement is to enhance the quality of life in Woodenville through planned provision of public and private capital facilities. And I feel that one of those elements should be to have multiple options or to have redundancies, so that if one goes down or if one is providing bad service, it doesn't affect the quality.
So you're talking about, like, having this modified, so it's like we're supporting having more than one provider? Because as you know, we don't actually ultimately control that, and there's all kinds of stuff with the Utilities Commission and all the other stuff that gets involved into those things. But if you want to modify this to have, like, something saying about supporting, yeah, I, that's, I think there's nothing wrong with something like that in there. It makes sense.
So we do have a utility goal that I also think is related, but, so we may want to consider modifying that instead, or an addition that says, support the availability of telecommunications systems and telecommuting as a means to mitigate transportation impact of development and growth. So that could be another place where we want to consider putting it. That, that's one of the reasons I wanted, or we consider or are going to combine these two elements is because I, I feel like where the line is between them is kind of fuzzy, so...
Yeah, I think either one would work, but having that explicit, that we're not trying to promote monopolies and that one of our goals in enhancing the quality is to have multiple options. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the policy 1.1 under here is when planning, developing, and administering the city's capital investment program, give primary consideration to the following, which is protect the public health and safety, provide infrastructure, support the provision of city services, maintain rehab, and replace the city facilities and infrastructure, and develop. So this first one's really about a lot of the city infrastructure. And then the next one is talking a lot about coordinating with the water utilities, sewer, wastewater treatment, and other public facilities. I, like I said, I'm gonna kind of just hit the high points of these, but feel free to stop me whenever.
Quick question. In sub D, it talks about maintain rehab, and then it says existing facilities?
Yes.
Would we, or should we think about, instead of saying just existing facilities, like necessary facilities or essential facilities versus just because we have it, we need to maintain it, but maybe it's functionally obsolete?
Um, yeah.
I'm sure, which point are we talking about?
I think he's talking about D.
Yeah, period, or, yeah, sentence D. It says, the goal is to maintain and rehab existing facilities. Generally, that makes sense, but what if it's an obsolete facility, but there's a goal or a priority to maintain it?
Well, maintain rehabilitation or rehabilitate, isn't that kind of what we're talking about? You're talking about trying to make, or you're just talking about generally, well, it says replace up there. So I, I, I'm trying to follow, which thing are we missing up in there?
No, I just think, I think it's, does it require that because we have an existing facility that we have to maintain it or replace it?
The answer to that is yes. We do, we do have to. I mean, the facilities are what support growth and, you know, sewer, water, roads, all those kinds of things. So yes, we do have to maintain, sometimes replace, sometimes improve. Sometimes you are able to remove them if it makes sense, but we do have to maintain them.
And, and I, I would agree with the sentiment. I'm just, I want to make sure that the sentence doesn't mean that because we have a building, even if it's been rendered obsolete through other developments or other infrastructure, that we're required to continue to maintain the older building because it's quote-unquote existing.
Well, this wouldn't be buildings. This is the infrastructure that supports the buildings. So, unless you're talking about, like, City Hall, I guess, if there's a City Hall building or a fire station, those would be the only things in buildings, and those get into the budgets and stuff.
Like, I think it'd be kind of like, if, if I'm understanding the commissioner correctly, he's thinking, like, if a time came that, for example, that fire built, or fire district building was obsolete because, say, they built another one in the city that they prefer because it's better, for whatever the reason, this would not obligate us, or he wants to make sure we're not obligated to keep things by a policy. Right?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, none of these goals or policies obligate maintaining obsolete facilities. It's mostly about, you have facilities, maintaining them and potentially enhancing them and stuff. I mean, there's some other ways we want to work around the wording on this, we can. I think, I think we've got the sentiment. Let's take a look at it and see what we can kind of do with it.
I think when it says maintain rehabilitate or replace the city's facilities and infrastructure as necessary, that would kind of tell you that if it's obsolete, you would replace it because that would be necessary to me. So I don't think it's really necessary to have anything further in there. I don't know.
But we could edit around a little bit to make it a little bit cleaner. We can take a look at that.
And like I said, the, the second policy under the first goal is to coordinate with the planning for the Water District, Sewer, Regional Wastewater, and other essential public facilities. And so that, um, I think is all that one is. And then, um, we talked about locating inventory and monitoring the capacity of existing facilities, ensure concurrency, so the plan for needed public and private capital facilities, identify deficiencies in public service, or public facilities, encourage joint siting and shared use of facilities for schools, community centers, health facilities, cultural, so... Any, anybody want to comment on any of those?
I have more of a general question, kind of related to this topic. How do we decide when to use, like, a, a public entity versus a private one to provide the utility or the functionality that we're looking for?
Well, we don't necessarily get to decide that because a lot of the stuff's already established. So, because, you know, Woodenville was incorporated later in life, so to speak. So, like, you know, the Water District provides our sewer and water. It's, it's not an option unless the Water District someday decides that it wants to sell its facilities and the city wants to buy it from them. So, um, it, it just ended up being the way things kind of existed for us. Same thing, Fire, Fire District exists here. Unless the city wants to form its own Fire District, which it could, if the council wanted to raise taxes and do its own Fire District, it certainly could do things like that. So, um, a lot of things, I guess, are already kind of, were already predetermined for us because of our time of incorporating. But in the future, there are some things, it just depends on what it is, but there are some things like fire and stuff like that, if there's, or police. If we decided we wanted to establish our own local municipal police department or our own municipal fire department, that's a council decision. My guess, they probably would take it through a vote and stuff because of the taxes and stuff that would be needed for it, but yeah.
And, and these goals don't prevent or influence any of that?
I mean, there hasn't been any indication that we're planning, that there's any desire to do that in the next 20 years. So, um, this is just reflecting what we're thinking over the next 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, the only one that I can think of that the city would have a, a choice to make would be for garbage. would be for garbage, you know, waste management.
Yeah, even that one.
But there's others that do it. There's like Republic and one other one. I don't know what they.
But if the city wanted to have, you know, establish its own municipal police and its own municipal fire, it could do things like that if it wanted to. Instead of relying on the fire district or contracting out with.
And, and more and more municipalities are getting away from that and doing contracts with other entities.
Yeah.
Sorry, just one last comment. That's kind of what I was trying to understand because I know more municipalities are going the, the way of privatizing services in an effort to do cost saving. But from the research that I've read, in the long term, it reduces the quality because you're paying less and eventually you get less for what you pay for, right? So that's what I was trying to understand. Thank you.
Pashir Robach.
Yeah, I did, I had, I guess it was a question on the level of service standards. And in looking over the fire protection ones, I looked them over and it seemed rather passive. And I was wondering, do we have a hand when we do the contract, contract and say, there's a certain level of service we're expecting and they expect them to live up to that? Or is it they hand us the standards and say, this is what it is?
I mean, basically, they're letting you know what they can do. I mean, so, I mean, trying to adopt something in there, you'd have to get the fire district to agree to it first. And that's not a full blown conclusion. It sounded like we're getting some feedback. So, you know, the fire department establishes its standards and stuff like that. Cities can certainly negotiate and stuff with them, including us. But that doesn't necessarily mean we would be successful because the fire departments have what they have and their abilities are what their abilities are usually.
Does that leave us in a position where, for whatever reason, sometime in the future, that they cut the standards way back, that we have no recourse?
It would be to form our own. If we want, if, if they were to cut services way back and it didn't match up, like, let's use the fire for the example. Although again, we're not talking that, really doing this, but this is theoretically speaking. If the fire department or the fire district had to cut back services for whatever reason, usually it's because, you know, they're lacking funds and stuff. It's going to be the main reason. But if they started cutting back and that was below a quality that the city wanted to have, then the city would have the ability to form its own fire.
Okay, now, similar of A, we contract with King County Sheriff's Department for a level of service and they're, they're obligated to provide that level of service. Is that not correct?
It's, that's all negotiated in the contracts, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. It's all really great conversation, I think, laying the groundwork for this. I don't know where my, there it goes. Okay. I was like, I didn't touch anything. So moving on, the policy seven under the first goal is maintain a process to regulate the siting of essential public facilities. And that is, has to be consistent with RCW. So this one, I don't think we have a ton of leeway on. There are some suggested edits. But just to, I think, make it a little bit more consistent with what's actually required. And then we, of course, can make it slightly more specific in the municipal code. Oh, I guess I should mention what essential public facilities are. And I believe that they are listed in the RCW, but they're facilities that are generally unpopular in the specific area, but are needed for the region. So things like airports and.
Prisons.
Prisons, trash.
Highways, the, the waste facility, all those are essential public facilities. The whole NERTS thing, that's an essential public facility. 522, 202, those are all essential public facilities.
So, just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what that meant. And basically, I think with the NERTS stuff, maybe everybody's more aware of this than sometimes. But we, the city can't say no to them, but we can have a process in place to condition them and make sure that they are as consistent as we can be.
Which is the reason why we're fighting it so much before there's even a decision. Because that's, that's the place to get at. It's before the decision's made.
So we are on to goal number two of the capital facilities plan. Plan or element, plan for, why is my screen keep going out? Plan for new public facilities other than transportation that maintain and enhance public health and safety based on locally adopted level of service standards and guidelines, which are in accordance with the state law. And so then the policies here talk about making sure that capital facilities support the adopted 20-year growth targets, adopted facility service standards and are consistent with the land use plan.
Is there anything that defines public facilities that are mandatory versus optional? And what I'm trying to understand is, I know in 2008, 2009, we went to a recession where we had to cut things back. And for example, our parks and rec was cut. So like, are there certain things that we have to have and things that are, if needed, we can cut? And like how would we go through that process?
Well, I mean, you're, you're talking about those are policy decisions on what can be cut and not cut. Obviously, there's some things that are essential like sewer, water, electricity, things like that. Things like parks and stuff like that, which, you know, our council doesn't have control of those items. On things like parks and stuff, that's, that's a matter of budgets. And so those are policy decisions that every jurisdiction makes on those kinds of things.
So there, there's nothing that's mandated by the state, for example?
No, I mean, you, you need to have capital facilities to support what you're doing, right? That's the mandate is that you're planning for and that you have sufficient capital facilities and utilities to meet your growth, to meet your existing needs and stuff like that, as well as the growth and stuff like that. But that's the main requirement. But like, again, going to the example of parks, you know, you may have the park meets your, your level of service for park, but then you may not be able to pay to maintain them anymore. You still have the parks. They're just not maintained up to the same standards they may have been maintained when you had funds available for it.
Yeah, and I'm also kind of thinking of what happened in the Detroit area where they lost a lot of population, cut back. Basically, they weren't, they didn't have as much revenue as they used to and they had to cut back a bunch of services. I'm trying to think, like, what process would we follow so that it's not just kind of a reactive process, but we proactively know what we would do in such situations?
Well, there isn't really anything because it's, that's all subject to whatever is going on and it's all subject to budgets. So there isn't really anything, when, when you're talking about a downturn and stuff like that, there isn't anything to predict over a 20-year horizon because all of our plans and stuff are not over declining. They're over accommodating future populations and stuff. And then of course, if conditions change, then you can go and update your plans to revise to the changes in the conditions.
Got it. It's interesting that our plans are optimistic and we don't plan for the opposite. But yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and just to your point, it's kind of interesting because, you know, you can compare like the west side where we have the growth going on and still projected to keep growing. But you go to the eastern Washington, you do have areas in there. They're not, they're not declining, but they're not, they haven't grown in decades, the, the populations. Or if they have, it's been pretty minimal. So that's part of your monitoring process. And so you, you know, we don't just adopt the plans and put them up on the shelves. The plans actually do then dictate budgets. They dictate how we're moving forward on things. And if conditions change, when you're in that next round of updating and stuff, then you would be modifying things to reflect those changes.
So in, in those cases, would it be valid to have a goal of like cutting certain things?
Not really, no. I mean, because you just do those in the, if, if that actually comes up and then you'll deal with it at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So the next policy here talks about basically that interaction with the service providers, where the city would request the applicable service provider to adopt improvement program to remedy deficiencies if there were any identified. And I believe like, for example, the water and sewer district, you know, they already have water and sewer plans in place. So they don't always want to necessarily put a lot of money into capital improvement programs, but that is part of their requirements. And then evaluate the adequacy of school facilities. And that's something we do through those school impact fees. And we also provide a report on a regular basis to school district that allows them to have an idea of what new housing developments have been approved. And then review the city requirements to ensure consistency between service providers, utilize level of service standards, which we've kind of already talked a little bit about. So these are the ones that are currently in the goals and policies section. And then provide adequate capital facilities and ensure consistency between capital, between basically the capital facilities plan, land use elements and all the other elements. Conduct regular public opinion surveys to assess the city's provision of services. And then explore options for alternative service delivery.
And George, your, your comment earlier that, so this is one that kind of talks about that, that you would reassess the land use if for suddenly, you know, we had decline in things happening because funding would dry up, right, as a result of that? And so then you have to reassess your land use and you reassess your plans and stuff with that.
When can that also, I guess I took that to mean also that if, if there isn't adequate water for new development that we'd have to reassess, and if there wasn't funding for it, we'd have to reassess that land use plan. Goal three, achieve consistency with, a lot of these are consistency with level of service and then surrounding jurisdictions. So coordinate with other public utilities, plan for infrastructure and funding strategies in cooperation with other governmental jurisdictions and private agencies. So just a lot of developing goals and policies with other jurisdictions. Goal four, ensure the development pays a proportional share of the cost of new facilities needed to serve such growth and development. So this is where we talk about the imposition of impact fees, such as transportation impact fees, park impact fees and school impact fees. And then seek opportunities to, for joint development of facilities through tools such as development agreements, INLU payments and mitigation fees. Review, goal five, review new projects requiring land use or construction permit approval for the availability, availability of inadequate water supply. So that mostly goes back to that coordination with the water district. It also encourages the hookup to the municipal water system for those properties on existing private well systems. To my knowledge, there's only maybe a couple properties in the city, so it's not very many. The next one, the text is really small and so maybe I should have split this onto two slides, but this all talks about wastewater systems. So talking about the conversion of private onsite sewage disposal systems to public sewage disposal systems and then all of those policies around that.
Yeah, onsite wastewater.
The onsite wastewater is the term, official term for septics.
So if there's any comments on that at all?
I, I assume that for allowing the conversion, there has to be the existing infrastructure in place? Like we wouldn't just lay down a, a tarp and we're like sewage lined and whatnot just for like one house type of thing?
Well, I mean, yeah, we wouldn't, well, I'm not gonna say we wouldn't or wouldn't be the water district if there was an emergency and in need to extend lines and stuff. That's a whole different thing. But yeah, but we do have to think about, you know, and you may recall way back when we talked about this and we're going to incorporate it in there. We have a map that actually indicates some of the older systems and on properties that aren't necessarily big enough where you can replace. And so we have to, we do need to be thinking about what could potentially happen if we start having septic system failures on properties and they're not big enough to be able to put another system in. Usually there's always alternatives if you have enough money, but these are things that we have to be thinking about, about that potential. But ultimately, there's nothing that, there's no, nothing that would prohibit somebody from extending, you know, if they wanted to into areas where there's septic systems. It's just, it's pretty expensive and obviously historically, there's been a lot of opposition to it. But if you ended up in emergency situations, you know, that may happen.
And is that something that the city can do, for example, to promote higher density?
I mean, if we wanted to, if, for example, we wanted to upzone the R1 zone. Let's use it because that's where the septics are, mostly in the R1. And then I don't know if it's some over there by Bothell, is that R6 zoning or R4? I don't remember.
There's just a, yeah, there's a couple of properties here and there otherwise, but.
But the majority of it's in the R1. If there was a desire to, you know, upzone the R1 significantly, then we would need to have plans for sewer extensions to go in to support all of that.
Got it. Is that something that the city would pay for or is that the developer would do that or?
Well, I mean, the plans would be worked in coordination with the water district. And the water district, water district generally doesn't build new infrastructure. They usually have developers build most of it. Although for the downtown, they are collecting extra revenues with the anticipation that they will not necessarily wait for developers to upsize the pipes and stuff down here. So they are being a bit more proactive, at least in this downtown along 175th area. But in general, they do not build infrastructure. They, it's the developers that build it and then they go through what that must look like and then they maintain it. They take possession of it and maintain it.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this one before we move on? And then this one has to do with basically stormwater design manual and just pollution in the stormwater. So mostly we do that with compliance with the King County Stormwater Manual and then also with our program that meets the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And that is actually something Public Works manages. But I know enough to know that it is very important that we maintain that and we don't get in trouble there, so.
Yeah, these are actually what you call mandatory policies.
Yeah. And that was the end of the ones that were previously the capital facilities policies and goals. So utilities, goal one is to coordinate utility, land use, transportation planning so that the utilities are available and can be provided in a manner that is physically and environmentally responsible, aesthetically acceptable and safe. So we talk about utility and telecommunications services. And this could be another location we want to think about Commissioner Mesa's comment from earlier. But do you have more?
Yeah, and the last part of U1 where it says, safe for nearby inhabitants. Inhabitants, does that include wildlife also? Because I know a lot of, or I've known of projects in other jurisdictions where, you know, big facilities get built and the impacts, for example, trails that animals would use, they now tend, or they can find alternative trails like through roadways and stuff which makes things dangerous. So I've seen some jurisdictions build like crossways, either under or overpasses for wildlife crossings. So I was wondering, was that the intent here, like to ensure the safety of wildlife also?
I don't know if that was the intent. This is taken from the existing plan. I suppose it could be interpreted that way, though.
I mean, I would propose that we make it explicit, but I don't know if my fellow commissioners would have the same sentiment.
Pashir Robach, if you have a comment? Mr. Krupps, you have anything on that?
I mean, I would like to see something in there and then we can look at it.
I would like to see something in there, and then we can look at it.
Yeah, at least like that, maybe look at some possible language.
Commissioner Lang, are you with us at all?
Yes, I think he's got it.
Okay, did you have anything to say on this topic? I'm sorry.
I think, I was just wondering, I have a quick question about the CFPsco number six, because I remember the King County actually is doing some survey about the septic policies. I wonder is, do we have any, any insights on that, around that particular topic?
In terms of insight, what are you thinking? I'm not sure I'm quite following.
So basically, for the slide, the previous slide, go CFP six, six point three, for the wastewater, onsite wastewater sewage. So I just got to know by chance that King County was sending out a survey to residents about potential changes in their policies regarding septic systems. I wonder if the city knows anything about what they're trying to propose and stuff.
Not currently, not, I'm not aware of anything. I've heard, I think I've heard about some of that, but that's not actually part of comp plan stuff, that's just basic development stuff that I think King County, maybe they're doing some stuff, but you'd probably have to check with King County, I'm not aware of anything.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Krebs?
Quick question, and I didn't get a chance to look into this, I'll just ask you. So we're talking about obviously citing and, and facilities, does our comp plan or our code talk about environmental justice? Is that something we've considered? I know it was built into, or added into the Growth Management Act in 21, at least on a state level, is that something that we speak to on a city level?
Yeah, I mean, we've actually done, because part of that, we had to do an analysis, that was one of the things, I think Amanda brought to you here, one or a couple meetings back, when we brought that memo where we did the evaluation and stuff on that. I'm trying to think if we have any, I mean, the climate action, if any of those actually have specific language, that uses that specific language, that part I don't recall at the top of my head, but we can take a look through.
Yeah.
That is supposed to be, that we do look through that, through the, I'm trying to think, the D E I.
Racially disparate impact analysis.
Yeah, we do go through and review for those things, which is a GMA requirement.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see, I mean, personally, I would like to see it built into a little bit, at least a direct, somehow directly addressed on a city level as well. I mean, the whole movement of environmental justice stemmed from facility citing.
Yeah, we can take a look, we can take a look at some language around that, and we can also double check to see if there's any, what language we have elsewhere in the code, too.
Thank you.
And then allow utility facilities as a permitted use where appropriate to ensure that the land's available for citing such facilities. And as you can probably imagine, they have less flexibility sometimes than, like, where new residential development is going to go, so that piece is pretty important. Base the extension and sizing of public facilities upon the land use plan. Coordinate with other jurisdictions when transmission facility additions or improvements cross jurisdictional boundaries. I do think that's one of the, the interesting things about utilities, right, that the electrical lines don't just start and stop at the city limits, they have to connect, so you have to work with other jurisdictions. Encourage the joint use of utility corridors consistent with non-motorized and recreational uses, and coordinate public road construction and maintenance projects. Require utility providers to design, locate, and construct facilities within the city, own properties and right of ways to reasonably minimize significant individual and cumulative adverse impacts to the environment, and to protect environmentally sensitive areas. So I think that this is when possible that utilities run with the roadways, or, you know, as opposed to cutting new swaths of land through potentially critical areas. And then recognize electric utilities have state regulated public service obligations. The second goal is to encourage and reduce energy consumption, conservation, and the use of renewable technologies and energy responsible, and energy responsible land use decisions.
And this is where we're getting into some of the things we're gonna need to look at the overlap with the climate and resiliency chapter, because there, there is some stuff that talks specifically to utilities in there, so we want to make sure there's consistency between those.
Do we have any say in, for example, solar panels, like the rates that people get for those from the local utility in our jurisdiction?
You mean whether we can say yes or no to them?
Or whether we can negotiate the rates on behalf of...
We can't, no, that's all controlled by, anything with the utility rates and stuff, that's all state and stuff, the city doesn't get to negotiate those.
Got it, thank you.
At least as far as I'm aware of, I believe that's all done at the state, there's a commission that looks at utility rates and stuff, and you'll see things like, you know, when they're gonna raise your rates, you'll see them talk about, like, I'm in Seattle, and I just saw recently that Seattle Light wants to do a bunch of raising rates, and so there was a whole thing talking about their discussions with the state utility commission and stuff, so in some cases, that's what comes into play on your rates.
Got it, and that's for how much you get charged, but I guess I was more referring to the opposite, where if you have solar panels and you're putting energy into the grid, usually you get paid some amount.
But the city doesn't determine any of that, that's, yeah, that's, as far as I'm aware of, that's all done through the providers, and I don't know if there's state laws around it or not, but...
Got it, and so there's no, there's no levers that we can use to influence that on behalf of our residents?
Not the city, no. We're, we're not experts or have the, are even able to, other than you talking to your elected officials and whatever that might entail.
Well, I would say that, I mean, the city could provide testimony at the, at the hearing they do, encouraging them to set a different rate or whatever, that, and, you know, say why it would be beneficial to...
And not just on the rates, but also on policies, like, for example, I know there are some, talking from other states that I know of, where, for example, you have to be connected to the grid in order to have solar panels as a policy, or like, you may or may not be able to use storage capabilities, like have batteries installed on your, on your house to use with electricity. So I'm wondering, like, those type of policies, which are not necessarily around the money that is either collected or dispersed to people, more around what you can and can't do.
I mean, you can, you can control things through, certain things through land use, like look, scale, things like that, I'm not sure where the authority would be to say you can't like do storage batteries in your house, or anything like that, and I'm not familiar with the state laws enough to know what they've put in around to help encourage solar as well, because there could be state laws around all this stuff, too.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Continuing on, require the, require the underground installation of new power and telecommunications lines where reasonably feasible. And so to implement that, for example, our development codes have some standards around that for new developments. Devote resources to encourage and enforce the Washington State Energy Code, which again, I feel like is not necessarily an option, but I guess we could help encourage it. And then ensure utility providers limit the disturbance of vegetation with major utility transmission corridors as possible. And then the last goal is reduce the waste stream, so encourage participation recycling and support creative solutions in reducing waste and conservation resources. So that is the end of the goals and policies.
I got a question on that last one. So we briefly discussed the energy part of the utilities and whether we have any say on how that happens. Do we have any say on our waste management solutions and programs? For example, I know composting is mandatory in Seattle, is that something that we can mandate or enforce also as part of our jurisdiction abilities?
Yeah, I mean, Seattle has a mandate, but they can't enforce it, because they can't go looking into people's garbage, so you're not allowed to, their ability to enforce it is pretty much nil, but to what extent, there's probably things that the city could, those are more, you're talking more regulatory pieces, not necessarily, I mean, policies can be adopted, we have things that just say encourage participation and reducing, and then you can develop whatever regulations and stuff, and cite this policy as supporting it. But we don't get into that kind of detail necessarily here, that's, like I said, that's more regulatory stuff, it would be more of a broader, that we want to support recycling and reducing waste would be, you know, the policy or the goal that we would look at.
Got it, thank you.
And this would include, for example, if you wanted to prevent styrofoam containers, or all, some of the cities are saying no plastic bags, or no paper bags, or whatever might be.
Yeah, I think jurisdictions have the ability to do things if they want to ban stuff like that, as far as I'm aware, they have the authority to do that. Again, unless the legislature passes laws that change some of that thing, because that sometimes happens, too.
And I would think that would come under the creative solutions and reduction of waste and conservation of resources. One thing that I'd like to kind of add in there is something, and I'm not sure, encourage the participation in recycling through education and information or something.
Okay.
Yeah, awareness kind of thing.
And that would be a good policy to add to this.
Thank you. Commissioner Lang?
Yes, I have a question for this one as well, sort of related to utilities, you know, reduce the waste stream, so I heard certain parts of a comp plan get a very, very much cost-free, you know, compost subscription from waste management. I wonder, is there something that the city can look into, you know, and negotiate the better rates for composting, you know, for residents?
Again, those are set by the utilities, the city doesn't have that authority on the rates, so that's usually utility, I mean, you can negotiate with different providers, right, because like, in the case of recycling and garbage, if we decide we don't want to go with what we're going with, we can always go and contract with somebody else, I mean, that's the flexibility you have on some things like that, that's, but that's, that's a negotiation and bidding and all the stuff that goes into that.
And I think this goal, this policy gives the city that ability, again, using creative solutions in reduction of waste and conservation, I think that's pretty open to composting if that's some, the direction we want to go.
Anything else on that one? All right, we'll move on to the next one. Amanda, how long do you think that's going to take on this last item?
The last item, I believe, is Robert's, so...
Oh, Robert?
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Forever?
Ivan's going an hour. We'll go through the slides actually a lot quicker, a lot of it will be depending on what questions you have and stuff, but you probably, I would just say to be on the safe side, I don't think we'll go this long, or hopefully we won't, but you might want to extend until nine thirty, just to be on the safe side.
Well said.
I move, we extend the meeting to nine thirty.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Yavroff, and a second by Commissioner Krebs to extend the meeting to nine thirty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained. The meeting is extended to nine thirty. All right. Director Grunba?
All right, I'm bringing this up, so a lot of this is just going to be actually right out of your, out of your packet. All right, so I just want a quick reminder, this, so this, so land use is the center of our comp plan, kind of talked about that before, the land use element is where zoning and everything really kind of focuses around, and all the other stuff tends to be supporting to the land use. This is probably your second most important chapter, housing, because as you know, there's a housing crisis, and the emphasis that's been going on in housing during this update has been pretty extensive, and I talked already, we've talked about this already, about the new middle housing requirements, and the planning for housing for different income groups, as well as the transitional housing permanent, and supportive housing, indoor emergency housing, and indoor emergency shelter, and the East Rail's been part of our stuff in resolving the planning for housing at the different income levels, and then the new middle housing, we talked about, because we are revising the descriptions of the land use designations, and making sure that we're allowing these two units per lot, which is what the new law require. So just a reminder, that's kind of the background that goes into what we're working on in updating our housing goals and policies. So in, in drafting the, what's in front of you now, which is some pretty significant, there's a lot of carryover from the pre, the current goals and policies, but there's also some significant changes. We took a look at the Housing Action Plan, we looked at the House bills, we looked at the countywide planning policies, and based changes and stuff on those documents, and then, just kind of like we did with the land use, we've reorganized them, so that's kind of for easier reading, so we grouped the goals and policies into these categories of planning for growth, regional coordination, community values, neighborhood quality, housing opportunities, special needs housing, and incentive programs. So as I kind of go through these things, like I said, I'm not going to go reading through all these things, I'm just going to kind of touch on them, stop me whenever there's questions, and, and we'll talk about it then. One thing I kind of want to note, because I did this comparison analysis, because as I mentioned, there, there's a lot of language rechange, so I just didn't do the underlying strikes there because it's too messy, so, but you can make a comparison from the current goals, and then I kind of lined up, just like I did with the land use, I lined up what are the equivalent of, in some cases, new, in some cases, it's still the same language, and in some cases, it's the same policy, but maybe some slight tweaks to the language and stuff on it. So the first ones I want to start with, where you see on current goals and policies on that table, where it's blank, that means the stuff on the right are actually new. So in this case, even though it's not completely a new idea, but we're just calling it out more specifically, support housing growth consistent with the regional targets, we've already kind of talked about what those are, and so that's just a policy that's backing that up. And then you can see about the requirement to accommodate our allocated share, the different income levels, and then also, this, this other part here is a bit more new, the policy H1.2 is not totally new, because it does kind of tie into some of the existing policies we have, it's just more expanded to reflect the changes in state law, but H1.3 is new, and this is out of the countywide planning policies, that we have to do this monitoring and evaluate every five years requirement, it's also in the state law, it's in the countywide planning policies, so in, for consistency, I'm adding it here to the, our comp plan is one of our policies, so any questions on these? All right, so this is again, one's a little bit more condensed, but this gets in a little bit more detail, integrate diversity of housing choices with inclusionary zoning to be provided, this comes from our Housing Action Plan, and also from the, the talk about trying to, you know, plan for all the different types of groups and stuff, so that, basically, they're reflective, one's just a lot more detailed than the other, so any questions on this one? Any thoughts, comments? Okay. This next one, now we kind of go the opposite direction to a certain extent with it, so where this other one has the goal, and then had, or, yeah, no, actually, that's a policy, and then had the ABC, we kind of broke things down a little bit more, some of these, we were able to eliminate because there's just a bit of redundancy in it, but you can see again, on the top, allow for a variety, same thing, maintain the vitality in state, like single-family neighborhoods, so we're talking about our different types of housing types, which are single-family, multifamily, mixed-use neighborhoods, and again, providing for the diversity of housing types. And then you can see these, these A and B, these we saw as a little bit more redundant, so those were eliminated, but then you go to the next slide, where you continue on, we took C and D and just kind of slightly reworked them a little bit, cleaned them up, and repurposed them into these H8.1 and H8.5.
I had a question about the proposed policy H8.5.
Mm-hmm.
I noted that the current policy and goal reads, allow manufactured homes in single-family zones, when they are consistent with city codes, look similar to site-built housing, and are placed on a permanent foundation. The new, the proposed change strikes when they are consistent with city codes and look similar to site-built housing, and I was wondering why the change? And I was wondering why the change?
Redundant. It's redundant. I mean, you have to, you have to meet your codes regardless, it doesn't matter. So it's, it's a redundant statement.
What about those looking similar to other houses? Can, for example, um, a property owner put a foundation and put a, a small trailer of some sort on that foundation, call it done?
So, I mean, when you have a permanent living facility, if you're going to make it a permanent living facility, you have building code requirements that come into play. So, um, the goals and policies don't do anything to address any of that stuff. That's all in your development regulations. So state law requires that anywhere you allow single family housing, you have to allow manufactured housing. But you can put a provision around it, for example, that says it has to be on a permanent foundation, which we have in our current policies and in the new ones of the code. And the code reflects this language as well. But like I said, most of the stuff is, other than like the permanent foundation, because if you don't say something along those lines, or at least in your codes, then, you know, they could go in with a temporary or a less permanent foundation. But beyond that, you know, you have to meet all the code requirements to put those things in. So they follow, manufactured housing follows different standards in terms of construction, because they follow HUD standards and not building code standards. But, um, you can have the requirements for design and stuff like that, as long as you don't create a situation where you're actually prohibiting something that the law says you have to allow. But otherwise, you know.
So manufactured housing placed on a foundation would have to meet current building codes then in standards?
No, it still meets HUD standards, but by placing it on a foundation, the foundation would have to meet building code standards.
Then they could have things which, they could put something in on a foundation which would not meet code?
The foundation itself is got to meet code. The manufactured home does not meet the building codes, it meets HUD standards. So there's a different set of standards it meets.
Are they consistent?
No, they're different. There's differences. I don't know the particular differences, but you'll get on a manufactured home, there'll be a, there'll be, um, um, a certificate, I think, usually on them. But yeah, you can't, and you can't require a manufactured house to meet building code standards.
They're built differently, so you couldn't.
What's that?
I understand, but are there safety issues involved then?
What's that?
Are there safety issues involved?
No, they, they have to still meet, there's federal standards they have to meet. It's just not the building code standards, it's a federal standards with the HUD standards that they have to meet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, what's the reason for adding the permanent foundation requirement? What does that do?
Well, so the law allows you to do that, and I think the main reason is so that they're looking like they more fit into a single family neighborhood. I think that's usually the main reason you do it.
Okay, and from a structural perspective, is there any, anything that that implies? I'm just trying to understand why I have that there.
Well, again, part of it is to look, and a permanent foundation is going to be more, um, solid for the, for it to sit on. But from a zoning perspective, it's, it's more about looks.
More about, okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, you can see the goal, one's a policy, the goal, we just turned one of that policy for promoting infill into a goal, um, because we thought there, there's some stuff to help kind of support infill, because in many ways, that's actually where we are at, right? Because the city is built out, even though we do have large areas of big property, but technically you're infilling where there's already existing development and stuff. So, um, uh, we kind of keep those in, I'm just trying to take a quick look. Yeah, so again, you can see this is, this is actually nothing, this is kind of reflecting the current. The only thing is we added some incentivizing infill development, which is one of the things we are trying to do with redevelopment and meeting our housing goals and stuff like that. So that's a new one there, but, um, it reflects kind of what we currently have in quite a bit of ways in our current goals and policies on this. So any questions on this? Um, again, you can kind of see comparisons are the same quite a bit, uh, just some numbering differences. The goal H two was a policy, working in partnership with King County. This is a little bit more extensive because there are, it's more than King County we can work with. Um, and in fact, you know, there is a, um, although I'm trying to remember this, actually something happened with this group, but there is, there is like a housing, uh, King County Housing Committee. I'm trying to remember the details because it was in the news. And unfortunately, I haven't been able to track it that closely because we don't really work with them that much, but we could try to promote affordable housing. So this is just, you know, reflecting that there's others involved that we can coordinate, uh, to promote the housing and stuff. And then, uh, you see on the one down there, um, we get into, we kind of reflect in the other policy with it. So any questions on this? All right, this is a little bit smaller, but this is one where, um, it, these policies, I'm trying to make sure I remember, oh, this is talking about affordability. So we do maintain this over in here, um, but then we've added additional, um, policies. They're in various parts of the different chapters. But I wanted to show that this one where we talk about, um, efforts towards housing, how we've incorporated policies in other parts of the housing chapter that are also reflected. So right now we have, this is the main one, but the new proposal has actually multiple policies that are also trying to encourage more affordability in the city. So any questions on this? Okay. Continue to support the Regional Housing Trust Fund, kept that in place. Recognize the combination, pretty much no changes here. Uh, this next one, let's see here, provided, um, more about affordable housing. This is talking about through incentives and standards. And so this just gets into, a lot of this reflects, I believe, our current one right now. Um, I think it's mostly just some language tweaking and then we've added some additional, there's additional policies, as I mentioned before, about affordability. There's encourage support first time, that's actually one of the ones that's over. We just separated it out, but that's actually, I believe, um, B up there. But we took, we just, we brought it out and gave it its own, um, unique, um, policy instead of keeping it under the list of the other stuff up there. Any questions on that? All right, um, require affordability covenants, which include provisions for units to remain affordable. That's actually, again, that's a regulatory piece, so it's a kind of, again, it's a redundant. Just book to the thing about having housing and stuff like that kind of gets us there already. But then we do talk more about collaborating with some of our populations. That's currently, we don't have policies on that. So this kind of got into the social justice question, I think, a little bit earlier, is a little bit of a reflection of that, um, but that we actually have policies to make more efforts in this area. And then also consider impacts on housing supply and affordability when making land use policy decisions. We do talk about that a lot more, but we don't actually have an official policy on that. So this is, this is pulling this in, it's kind of consistent with everything else that's going on, that yes, we should be thinking about that, because often, when you're looking at properties being redeveloped, it's the properties, particularly with housing and stuff, you're looking at the properties that may displace, currently, you know, cheaper or properties that are underutilized, and that tends to be where your most affordable stuff is. So you need to think about how zoning might impact some of those things. So we're adding a policy for that.
A question on, on the previous slide?
Yep.
Um, when we say collaborate with populations most disproportionately impacted, uh, what do we mean by collaborate? Are we talking about, um, like financial support? Like what, what's collaborate mean?
I mean, it can take a, I think that can take a lot of different things, but one of them, it starts with just basically reaching out, um, because we don't really have, you know, as we've been doing these things with the housing action, the economic plans in these last few years, our outreach to, um, larger chunks of the population, including a lot of the ones that are disproportionately impacted. We have definitely been stepping all of that up, but you know, historically, it was kind of hit and miss, I think, with a lot, and we didn't have any policy supporting it, even though, you know, like I said, I think there is, I'm not telling you we haven't ever done it, because I think there have been efforts. It's just that we have definitely stepped it up, and now by making this a policy, it puts greater emphasis. But it can be pretty broad, um, into what your, what collaboration might mean. It may be just outreach, it may be to the point you're talking about, if there's programs and stuff. It could take a lot of shapes and forms.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, this, this is a, just revising, currently we talk about to provide housing opportunities and wouldn't be able to support for human services for people with special needs. So I expand on this one, basically to ensure fair and equal access to housing is available for all persons. So it's, again, it's just, and it talks about.